I call this work meeting of the Beltrami County Board of Commissioners to order. Is there any new employees to be introduced? Seeing none, uh, does anyone have any future work meeting topics that they would like to bring up? Seeing none, see, no, I told you that it's not gonna be three oh five, it'll be earlier. Uh, let's have Pat and Danielle. Come on up and give us a jail update. Thank you.
Yes, hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, little update for um, the group, um, oh. Oh yeah, Danielle Reed with Klein McCarthy Architects, hello everyone. Um.
Well, Pat Wards, Carl Sanderson Construction.
Alright, so brief little um, update for you guys, um, the project is currently in the bidding phase. Um, so we will anticipate um, bids being um, submitted October twenty second. Um, so the design team has issued a few clarifications as questions come in. Um, we're able to answer via addendums, we've issued a couple of addendums. Um, the plan review process is um, going really well. Um, the state plan review picked up the building review um, last week, which means they're gonna take a period of time, review the documents and um, ask us any questions that that they may have. Um, so I'm anticipating that that process will take about a month or a month and a half. And um, we are awaiting the plumbing plan review. Um, we received the Department of Corrections Plan Review this week. Um, we have an approval from the Department of Health. Um, and we're working with the city to answer any of their questions that they may have as well, so. Um, really brief update from my perspective. I know Pat's here and we'll be able to answer any of your questions regarding the, the actual bid process and um, contractor questions.
Thanks Danielle.
Yeah.
Um, one thing for budget update, we haven't done, last time we presented was in July, the construction budget was at um, check, where are my glasses with? Sixty-eight thousand, two four hundred twenty-four thousand, two ninety-seven. And the overall project budget was tracking to be around seventy-nine point six million or so. And we're still carrying that three million dollars for existing jail in that, the overall budget. But then, once we get bids coming on October twenty-second, we'll know what the, the real numbers are. Like Danielle mentioned, the bids were due at uh, October twenty-second at two P M. And then, we had the pre-bid meeting today, uh, was, there was like twelve or thirteen attendees in person and about thirty-five people online. So it was a good turnout for a non-mandatory pre-bid, so there's a lot of good interest on that. Um, still anticipating to go back to our GMPs in the middle once we get all the bids on November nineteenth board meeting. So we're still tracking on that because I believe you did not want us to present those on the November fifth meeting because it's election day, so.
Yeah, actually, our, we won't have a meeting on the fifth, we'll be at about twelve.
Yeah, okay. That's all I had for construction too, because now we're just kind of in that waiting pattern a little bit till getting numbers back and plan review stuff, so things are heading in the right direction.
Uh, questions for Pat or Danielle? Yeah, Craig?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, so Danielle, it sounded almost like things were maybe moving a little faster than anticipated with the state, do my, should I knock on wood or?
No, I, no, to be honest, I was surprised too, um, and the typically the state, the plumbing review occurs before the building review from our perspective, um, so yeah, and I was surprised.
Are we cautiously optimistic?
Cautiously optimistic, yeah, well.
Thank you.
Next process though could take a few developments.
Well, that's just it, um, mm-hmm, so they just picked it up, so we see typically four to six weeks for them to review it because it has to go through their structural review, mechanical, electrical, um, code, of course, fire, um, suppression review and accessibility, so it, there's many people that, that look at it at the state level. Um, so then, once they send us back all their comments, um, we typically take, we try to strive for one or two weeks returning and a typical process of this uh, project of this size takes about two rounds of clarification, so um, with that said, I think I'm hopeful that we'll have a permit by the end of the year. Mm-hmm. Yeah, good.
Anybody else have questions for Danielle?
Yeah, go ahead. Uh, sounds like things are going really well, so that's great, um, any minute hiccups at all, any, like, anything minor? Um, how's your guys' staffing, are you all staffed up?
Yep.
Okay.
We're getting ambitious to get ready to get going, so yeah, that's sitting good.
Great, we could get held up by a tree or two from the city, but other than that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How is it going with the city?
Yeah, yeah, so far, we, we got some uh, requests for some additional trees, so we're gonna work out uh, who, where we're gonna put them. Yeah.
Any other questions for Pat or Danielle? Alright, great, thanks for the update, appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thank you guys, take care.
Alright, let's move on to the new jail testing, inspection and commissioning contracts, I believe that would be Tom.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, that's Tom Berry County Administrator. Um, I have before you, I put three different contracts under this agenda item title, uh, since they're all essentially related and required as a part of our uh, construction of the new county jail. Uh, there's a uh, essentially a mechanical and an electrical inspection services uh, requirement, a building envelope requirement and a special testing and inspection requirement. So I wanted to run through each of those because later in the uh, regular session this afternoon, uh, we're making the recommendation that you approve all three of those contracts but separately. So we'll just jump into the special testing and inspection uh, services contract. You know, special testing and inspections is really critical uh, during building construction uh, because it allows us to ensure safety and quality of the construction that's going on. And of course, we want that to be independent, so we don't have this contract run directly through the construction manager. You might recall, most of the contracts that we'll be having on the construction of the jail will run directly through the construction manager at risk process. Um, but the state doesn't allow, nor is it good practice to have uh, the special testing or any of these testing services and inspection services run through the contractor um, or construction manager. So that's why we will have an independent, separate contract with these uh, contract, these vendors to provide these services. Uh, so for special testing and inspection, we'll be uh, looking at things like soil compaction, we'll be looking also uh, things like uh, the, the footings and concrete strength, asphalt thicknesses and quality, uh, structural components, welds, all, all sorts of things like that during construction. Um, and so uh, when we uh, put this scope of services out to um, out to the street, I'll forbid, we had four qualified firms that were solicited and uh, three responses that were received. Uh, the recommendation uh, at this time is to contract with American Engineering Testing, also known as uh, A E T. And their proposal included an estimate of their scope of services uh, that's based on a time and materials basis. So of course, we don't know yet how much exactly it's gonna cost, but based upon the size of the project, they're looking at the scopes and that sort of stuff. The estimate has come in at around seventy, seventy-one thousand dollars. Uh, could be a little bit more, could be a little bit less, but on a time and materials basis, that's exactly how those are, are sort of um, uh, evaluated or costed. So that would be special testing and inspection, uh, it is required by the state, uh, the state's uh, development code, Minnesota State Development Code, and uh, something that we will have to enter into a contract for to provide those services to make sure the building gets constructed uh, according to the standards. The second contract is for uh, independent building envelope inspections, and of course, this would include the building envelope and inspecting all the things associated with the building envelope, including the roof, the walls, um, you know, doors and windows, those types of things, and also to comply with energy efficiency requirements under the state code as well. So that uh, scope of services was sent out and three qualified firms were also solicited. Uh, Braun Intertech was being recommended after the evaluation. And their proposal is also based on a time and materials uh, standard, so same exact sort of thing, you know, depending upon how many inspections, how long the inspections are, uh, that sort of thing will dictate what the ultimate cost will end up being. But the estimate based on the size of the project and a number of inspections that are anticipated has come in at about twenty-two thousand, uh, just a little bit over that. Um, the third contract would be for independent mechanical and electrical inspection services, uh, which is of course, very critical to evaluate uh, independently as it relates to how the systems within the building are functioning, particularly related to mechanical and electrical systems, want to make sure that all of that's working, it's a very complex facility. We have a lot of inter uh, interplay between parts and services and that stuff with inside the building. Uh, and so we need to make sure that all of that's, that's up and running well. So uh, four qualified firms were solicited uh, for that uh, service and Stocky Commissioning and Building Solutions uh, is being recommended. Uh, their particular contract's a little bit different, they're proposing a lump sum contract, uh, which essentially is uh, not to exceed, uh, provided that the work and uh, crafts or the, the services remain within scope. And so the lump sum for this uh, mechanical and electrical inspection services is fifty thousand, five hundred dollars for the project. As I mentioned before, each service would be separately contracted by the county. Uh, so we would essentially be the owner with a direct contract uh, to the vendor. Uh, I wanted to let you know that the county's attorney's office has reviewed the contracts, so they have gone through a vetting process. We did make a couple adjustments, which I appreciate the quick turnaround by um, by those involved. And then uh, as I mentioned, because we're uh, doing this as a separate contracts, you'll see that as separate um, agenda items on the consent uh, agenda. So if you have more information that you'd like after our discussion today, uh, later this afternoon, you can pull those and, and continue the discussion if you'd like, or, or otherwise, if we get your questions answered, uh, we can leave that on the consent agenda and, and then have it approved accordingly. Uh, but that's what I have for you this afternoon as it relates to um, to the services that we're going to need. Uh, you know, it seems maybe in some cases that acquiring these services is a little bit early, but actually, that's not the case because some of these services have to be, uh, uh, or the vendor has to be identified in order for us to get permits too, so. Uh, so we do have to disclose, you know, who's gonna be doing this as a part of our permitting process as well. Uh, so anyways, that's what I have for you, but I'll stand for any questions you might have as it relates to either of these uh, three contracts.
Questions for Tom? I don't see any, Tom.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you. So Ann, sorry to have to hustle you down here, but we are running a little ahead, so I hope that's not too, too much of a problem. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners, Ann Lynn Seth, Director of Health and Human Services. And I'm here today to share some success stories with the board and the public. Um, Health and Human Services does a lot of positive and very impactful work. And we serve the community in many ways, and we'd like to provide some examples of that service, um, highlighting that service provision with two stories that we have. We want you to hear about these real stories of families in Beltrami County that are receiving services through Health and Human Services, um, so that you can understand kind of the vast array of work that we do over at Health and Human Services and how it's really impacting real people of the community. So, um, the level of detail that I'm gonna share with you today with these stories is something that was authorized by the subjects. Um, so we won't be able to answer in-depth questions about the examples, um, but if you have general questions at the end, we certainly can answer those for you. We have a plan to come to the board on a more regular basis with success stories and we want to have representation from our three separate divisions each time that we come. Today, we do not have public health represented, but um, our Public Health Director, Amy Bowles, is gonna share a success story, um, excuse me, at the Community Health Board meeting when she comes, October fifteenth. So, the first story that I'm gonna share is on behalf of Social Services. The story is a story about Sonia. Sonia is a thirty-nine-year-old woman who obtained a severe traumatic brain injury resulting in complete paralysis when she was twenty-four years old. Since then, she has spent most of her life in and out of hospitals and nursing facilities, primarily in the Twin Cities. Sonia's family, including her father, who has always tried to visit her at least weekly, all live in Red Lake. For years, Sonia's father has advocated to have her move to a placement closer to him so that he could see her more often and advocate more effectively on her behalf. In September of twenty-twenty-two, Beltrami County received assessment documents from Ramsey County indicating that Sonia was in a nursing home and seeking relocation service coordination. She was opened up to case management in Beltrami County so that we could assist with that relocation. In May of twenty-twenty-three, after numerous referrals had been made by her social worker, seeking placement for Sonia, she was admitted to a group home in Bemidji that provides nursing care for high medical need residents. Sonia's father was ecstatic to have his daughter living close enough for him to see regularly and for her to be in a facility where not only were her needs being met, but also provided her with a comfortable, home-like setting with staff who care about each of the residents and make sure that the residents are able to get out of the home to participate in community events. In the first year of living at the group home, Sonia was able to attend a local pow-wow, be taken out on walks around the neighborhood, attended a movie, movies at the theater and other community activities. After the social worker was able to get to know Sonia and her father better and hearing her father share that he believes his daughter tries to communicate with him by blinking once or twice on command, the social worker referred Sonia for a technology assessment to determine if she might be able to use an assistive device to allow her to communicate. The company that works with Sonia through this journey to communicate is a company called Live Life Therapy Solutions. That company is funded through Medical Assistance Waiver Funding, which is administered by Health and Human Services through Sonia's social worker. The service provider has visited Sonia on three occasions from July through August of twenty-twenty-four to work with both Sonia and her support people on how to utilize the communication device. I'm gonna read an excerpt from the service provider on Sonia's progress. "As of today, July twenty-ninth, we spent some time having Sonia interact with the device and she was able to activate a number of icons using her eyes, including telling her dad, 'I love you dad,' and she smiled big. It was so exciting to see her comprehending what she was saying and then reacting to it. An eye device can be very tiresome, so we discussed using it for fifteen minutes per session about every two hours for her to practice and interact with it. The home support person took notes and will relay this information to the rest of the staff and her family. We also spent time reviewing the organization of the language system and how to edit on the device. We added some customization specific to Sonia so that she had information to share and was able to repeatedly say her name, including her Ojibwe name and her birthday. It is typical that it takes a long time for an individual to learn how to use an eye gaze device and success is often dependent on our belief in the ability to communicate. End note. Although this is a long process, Sonia was able to tell her dad, 'I love you,' for the first time in fifteen years and has the ability to show that she understands what is going on around her. This has been life-changing." So that was written up by the social worker who worked very hard um, to provide the supports needed for Sonia. This is work that our social workers do every day and I am honored to be able to share it with the board. I really want to give credit to our staff, they work very hard to help and support the people of Beltrami County. So I'm happy to be here today to talk about some successes. And we have Kurt Anderson, who's also going to come up and provide one from Economic Assistance, so thank you.
Thanks, Ann. Good afternoon, Commissioners, uh, next, oh, wait a second. I shouldn't know how to do this. There we go. Uh, thank you for the opportunity uh, to share an example of how your economic assistance team and the programs that they work with positively impact our county residents every day. Today, I'd like to highlight the story of Sabrina, who is someone um, our workers have had the privilege to support along her journey. Our Employment Services Team involvement with Sabrina began when she was referred to us by our Family Income Maintenance Team as a participant to the Minnesota Family Investment Program. At the time, Sabrina was facing significant challenges, including homelessness and unemployment. She started working with our navigator, Jerika Christiansen, and shared her goal of becoming a paraprofessional with Teachers On Call. Although she had applied before, she had not been hired. Additionally, Sabrina struggled to secure daycare for her daughter while pursuing her career goals. In June of twenty-twenty-three, Sabrina was successfully able to find a daycare provider and the Child Care Assistance Program was able to help with payments, allowing Sabrina to focus on her professional aspirations. While Jerika continued, with Jerika's continued support, Sabrina was connected with our business account representative, Amy Mystic, who helped her improve her resume and develop her interviewing skills. This preparation led to a paid work experience opportunity at the Headwater Science Center downtown where she interviewed with the executive director. Sabrina was hired in January of twenty-twenty-four and during her six-month tenure at the Science Center, she made remarkable progress. She developed a variety of professional skills, including effective communication, punctuality, teamwork, customer service, working with children and even, even caring for animals. Her dedication did not go unnoticed and midway through her placement, she was increased with her hours. And a statement from the executive director from April of this year was, "Sabrina has become an important addition to the staff and customers at the Headwater Science Center through Beltrami County Supported Work Program. One of our most enduring exhibits is called Blue Blocks. It is most inviting when it is all stacked up and ready to go first thing in the morning. Sabrina has taken charge of that task, blue blocks are stacked, carpet is vacuumed, blue blocks that require cleaning or sterilization are separated and removed and the blocks are ready to go for another day. Additionally, Sabrina sees things and takes care of them. The very definition of taking the initiative, exactly what is treasured in an employee. Last but not least, Headwater Science Center hosts a very large field trip group and sometimes these groups exceed one hundred guests. Sabrina has taken on supervising the rabbit exhibit, Theo and Summer, our domestic bunnies. And they also posted on Facebook uh, in April of twenty, April twenty-third, uh, Sabrina instructing some of the young guests on the proper technique for petting uh, the rabbit, Summer. So with all that, the Supported Work Program ended in July of twenty-twenty-four. However, the Science Center was able to extend her employment uh, through them for an additional uh, few weeks while she secured a new job. Sabrina received a glowing letter of recommendation from a colleague at the Science Center and by September, she had been hired by Teachers On Call and began working as a paraprofessional with I S D thirty-one. So Sabrina's journey is a testament of her resilience, determination and courage and it also exhibits the power of support, opportunity and embracing new challenges. Thank you, Commissioners, again for this opportunity to share some of the positive impacts of your economic assistance team.
Thanks, Kurt.
Thank you to the board for supporting Health and Human Services, do you have any questions regarding our success stories?
Questions for Ann or Kurt? Richard?
I, I don't have any questions, it's just, it's good to hear the success stories because sometimes on the outside, we hear the negative stories. And so, uh, thank you for sharing and I'm glad to hear that you're gonna be continuing to do that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Appreciate it. Did you get a warning that we were running early?
I didn't get a warning, but I had it on uh, live stream and I, I, I better get down there.
You're on, Jody.
Are you ready?
We're ready.
Good afternoon, everyone. Off, there we go. Um, I will start with, I have a presentation to go through and we can hit questions um, as we go along the way. I started with though, wanting to introduce Beltrami County's election team. So our base election team we have here, um, we'll start with myself. Um, as the auditor treasurer, I have been working for Beltrami County since two thousand and two in elections, so working elections for about twenty-two years. Um, became the auditor treasurer in two thousand and twelve, so then administering elections for about the last twelve years. In that twelve years, most of this crew has been right there by my side. So I just wanted to um, introduce everyone that I could to you. Um, we have Danielle Johnson, Haley Rosinsky, Samantha Rucks, and Danielle Johnson is upstairs checking in absentee voters that might be coming in while we're down here. We also have an intern this year, um, she's a political science major through B S U. That's Edie Franzen, and she's been a very instrumental part of our team. So this group, this is our, our base group, this group is hardworking, they're experienced, they're dedicated, and I could not do what I do without their support. So I want to thank them for everything they do for Beltrami Elections. Um, thank you also for having me come in and speak today. Um, this is a presentation that I've given several times throughout the community, several different organizations. So it kind of hits the same format, um, so instead of re-inventing, inventing the wheel, I'm just going to go through what I've gone through with other organizations. And that is, um, we'll start with voter registration, hit a little bit on security and process. Um, talk about any law changes that have happened in the last two years. Um, talk about what coming, upcoming absentee hours and locations we have and then any resources or how people can find resources for elections. So there's a lot to cover, as I get through each one of these categories. If you have questions, feel free to ask the questions then, or if you'd rather wait till the end, we can, we can go through all the questions then. And I did, I did tell our election crew that they don't have to stick around and leave Danielle up there all by herself helping voters, so. Um, so they, they were gonna take off and do, and help her out. So we'll start out with voter registration. To be eligible to vote in the U S, you need to be a U S citizen, eighteen years of age on Election Day and a resident of Minnesota for the last twenty days. Your options for registering, you can use the, the old school way with a paper registration application. We have those applications upstairs, anyone can stop in, fill in, out an application and register to vote. Um, the second option is with, when you renew your driver's license. And this also provides a um, a look into one of the new laws that passed. Um, this last, I believe it was in twenty-three and then taking effect in twenty-four. Um, when someone renews their driver's license, they automatically get queued in the voter registration system. So it's called automatic voter registration. Those, the DMV's system, software system speaks to the Secretary of State's voter registration system and sends that application over to the state system where it gets, it, it's in a pending status for twenty-eight days. Um, during that twenty-eight days, that voter, that driver's license applicant receives a letter in the mail saying if they choose uh, to not accept the registration, the voter registration, they need to contact our office to decline it. Then after twenty-eight days, it gets put in a queue in our office and our office processes that application. Voters can also go online at MNvotes dot S O S dot state dot M N dot U S and just register to vote online. This is open until pre-registration ends, which is October fifteenth. This is open until pre-registration ends, which is October 15th. So at that point, everyone that's registered in the pre-registration period, their name will be on a roster for the upcoming November election. The final way to register is in the state of Minnesota, Election Day registration is allowed. So if you are not registered, and you go to your poll site on Election Day with the proper identification, you can register to vote and vote that same day on Election Day at your poll sites.
Second?
Yes.
So I don't forget. So what do they have to bring on Election Day to be able to provide? What, what do they need to provide to prove that they're eligible to vote?
There's a lot of different options of what to bring, but basically, it boils down to they need to prove who they are with photo, photo identification and prove where they live. So that could be, if it's a current driver's license with that address, one, that driver's license takes care of both those, those categories, who they are and where they live. If they have a driver's license from Koochichin County, but they now reside in Beltrami County, they can still use that driver's license to prove who they are, but they would need some type of utility bill, property tax statement, some other way to prove where they live.
How do they prove that they're a citizen?
The proving of citizenship doesn't happen with voter registration. The proving of citizenship happens after the registration application is put into the state system. Then the state goes out and certifies with the Social Security Administration and the Department of Justice. They certify the citizenship at that point.
So then if a person's registering on voting day, is their ballot, I'm trying to think of the word, provisional?
The state of Minnesota does not have provisional ballots. So that person that is voting on Election Day with an Election Day registration, their ballot goes in the ballot box, just like every other ballot of someone that votes that day. When, when they vote, they certify that they're eligible to vote, including affirming that they are a U.S. citizen. So they're swearing to the fact that they're a U.S. citizen. If, and then it says, under the penalty of perjury, before they can register and cast a ballot. So they're, they're affirming and swearing to the fact that they're a citizen. If it goes through the certification process and it's found out that they are not a citizen, then that comes back to the county attorney's office, and the county attorney processes that as a, a felony and, I'll just read what the state has here. Federal penalties for voting as a noncitizen are severe, including fines up to $100,000 and imprisonment if they intentionally misrepresented their citizenship status. Deportation if they cast a ballot. And when voting when ineligible can be permanent bar to their citizenship. So that's, that's what, that's how the state has implemented a stop to people voting who are not citizens.
So then it follows that six people could swear that they're citizens, vote, and someone loses by five votes, and then these people get prosecuted later, the vote still stood.
That's correct.
Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yep, that is correct.
Could you elaborate on the, the second option for the, the registration, where they're automatically registering their driver's licenses? Because the illegal aliens or whatever are getting driver's licenses in Minnesota now. And if they're automatically getting registered to vote, then doesn't that just exacerbate that problem? Or how, how, how do you explain that?
Driver's license for all does give a driver's license to everyone who is, who is in the United States asking to drive in the United States, regardless of citizenship. When that, when that license goes into the state and it's in that pending period for, for the person to disallow that, if they decline that voter registration, then it does not go on there. If they accept that voter registration and then vote, then they would have those same penalties.
Sorry for the interruption.
No, that's, they're all very good questions, and they're all questions I've received every time I've given this presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Jim. Jody, you mentioned her residency. So what if somebody is homeless? I know that we have a homeless population in the county, and, and there's questions and concerns about people being able to vote, that that can prove their residency or citizenship and, and things like that. How does, how is that addressed?
For a person who is homeless, they are allowed to register to vote, usually through vouching from someone who knows where they live, whether it's at the People's Church, whether it's at one of the homeless shelters, whether it's under a bridge. They are allowed to register to vote wherever they sleep at night. And they can do that by having someone vouch for them. If they don't have the driver's license that has that address on it or a utility bill, then they have someone vouch for them that says, yes, I know who they are, and I know this is where they sleep every night. So they are allowed to register and vote that way. The, there was one law change this last, over the last two years that also allowed someone to register with a description of where they live, with not a physical address. So that kind of goes hand in hand with that person that is homeless looking to vote.
Okay, I was going to ask, you know, how, how somebody that, that sleeps, you know, under a bridge, how would they register that as an address? So that's, thank you.
It's just used the description. They just use, they describe where they are, and they're registered in the precinct of where they describe.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. So a voter's personal information is entered into the state's voter registration system, no matter what process they start with. How that application gets to us, that personal information gets, but entered into the state's voter registration system. That application then goes through a verification process, which involves the Department of Public Safety verifying against a driver's license or an ID card. Social Security Administration, again, verifying against the social security number that that person would have. Once they're verified, they are queued in our, our portal in the state's voter registration system. And then we process that registration. If it cannot be verified, they're, they become what is called challenged. And either they come into the auditor's office at that time to clear the challenge, prove who they are with their driver's license, prove where they live, or they take care of that at the poll site. So if they, if it cannot be verified, then they are challenged, and they have to go through extra steps to, to certify their registration. A person's registration remains active unless they have a name change, which would either be given to us from the voter, or again, that can come from the Department of Motor Vehicles to the, to the Secretary of State site. An address change, which comes from the post office. Those two software systems also speak to each other. So anyone that moves, puts in a permanent change of address with the post office, it triggers a challenge in our system. And they then get a postcard that says, we've received a notification that you've moved out of the county or out of the state. You need to then contact Beltrami County Auditor's Office to clear up that address issue. One of the issues that, with that, that we, we come across, if the post office, if you put in a temporary change of address with the post office, it does not affect your voter registration. But the temporary change of address, I believe, only lasts 90 days. And for someone who's a snowbird and goes for six months, the post office encourages them to put in a permanent change of address, and then when they come back, do another permanent change of address. And it's that permanent change of address that for a lot of snowbirds, triggers them getting a postcard saying that their voter registration is going to be inactivated. And they can always call our office, and we can take care of that at our office. A person's record, if they are inactive for four years, if they do not vote in an election for four years, their record becomes inactive that way. Or if they're, the person, the voter is deceased, the state system receives death records from the Department of Health and then puts them as a deceased voter. Or again, the family could, could bring a death certificate into our office, and we could inactivate the voter's record that way. That is it for voter registration. Any other questions on voter registration?
Yeah, I've got to ask one more.
Sure.
So you said on a name change, what if someone changed their name? For whatever reason, maybe they got married or whatever reason. They're not eliminated if they don't tell you. If they, let's say they come in with their new identification, changed last name, and they say, I would like to register to vote. Even though they're already registered to vote, that person could potentially vote twice, correct? They could vote under the old name and vote under the new name.
No, the, the new name supersedes the old name. So when they come in to change their name, their old voter record becomes inactivated or changed to the new name. And the state's system does, and this happens behind the scenes, this does not happen in our office, runs queues to check birth dates for any matching voters' names, any names that might have a different initial or that sort of thing. So they do run some checks behind the scenes at the state level, at the software level.
So the person that, so what I'm getting at is that if the person was intentionally wanting to defraud and just walked in and voted a same-day voter registration and did not declare that that was a name change, they just came in with their new driver's license, and they voted, and then they circled around later in the day and came in and voted because they were already on the registration rolls. That could happen, correct? Obviously, it would be felony, but...
It, it would be very difficult to happen because the absentee voting ends the day before the election. And so every person that comes in and absentee votes, we push out to the precincts who has voted. So if I came in and voted as Jody Treat, if I was Jody Promisberger, which is my maiden name, and that's what I was registered in Port Hope as, and I came in before Election Day and absentee voted and changed the, changed my name to be Jody Treat and voted there, the, the staff in my office then sends a, a supplemental register of people who have voted absentee to Port Hope and says, put absentee voted by Jody Promisberger's name, Jody Treat's name. So it would be very difficult. I'm not saying it couldn't happen, because there would have to be a lapse in when we got the information to the town hall. Maybe they forgot to write it in the book or something like that. But there are steps in place to stop that from happening, and that's, that would be the step, is that absentee ends the day before the in-person can begin.
The person that walks in at 7:30 in the morning and then circles back around at 7:30 at night, because there's probably different poll workers. And they come, they come in purposely to defraud. They come in under one name and then come back and vote under another name. That's possible.
Except for it can't happen the same day. If you're going to vote absentee, that has to be the day before.
You're not talking absentee.
No, I'm talking that this person intentionally wanted to vote twice that day. They could do that.
In person at the polling place.
Not absentee, they're, they're potentially wanting to defraud.
Yeah, if it's not absentee, if they walked in...
There's no way to check that.
No.
Wouldn't have, wouldn't a photo ID to vote solve that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, so, I mean, it almost sounds like, you know, they're, they're questioning the election workers, the election judges. I guess I'm, I'm aware of a situation, maybe election or two ago. My wife, she votes pretty regularly. She showed up, and somehow that there was, her, her middle name was changed somehow to, I think it was some, some gentleman's middle name. And so she took in her IDs and everything, you know, and proved her, her identity. So I mean, I, I think our election judges, you know, do a really great job to ensure that our elections are fair and honest. I don't know how many election judges that we have in the county that alternate or switch shifts, or, or are these election judges, is it a 13-hour shift? Or how, how does, how does that go? Because it sounds like people have questions on, on the integrity of our, of our elections.
It's not on the integrity of the, of the election judges. Election judges, I think, do a great job, but they could easily be defrauded.
Well, if I seen somebody at eight in the morning, I'm sure I'd probably remember them at eight in the evening.
And I will say, most precincts are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Most smaller precincts, it's the same four people working all day. The larger precincts do shifts, four-hour shifts, eight-hour shifts. So the larger precincts, they do have different people working at different hours. The, the election judges are hired by the townships. So I'm, I'm not sure how many election judges. We do the training for all of the election judges in the county, but I'm not sure exactly how many each precinct has working at a, at a certain time or throughout the day. But I do know most smaller precincts, it's usually the same four people all day. It's the city wards and the precincts surrounding the city or the township surrounding the city that have the, that shift work and may have 10 to 12 election judges a day.
So if anybody wanted to defraud, you know, the, the election system and process, they would have to go to great lengths to, to, you know, defraud your, your fellow township person or, I mean, to me, it just doesn't seem worth it.
They would have to be very intentional about it. It's, I, I don't believe it could happen by mistake. It would have to be an intent of that person.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Craig?
Yeah, Jody, a couple of years ago, I had a constituent that brought in a mail-in ballot, not a registration, but an actual ballot for somebody that had been passed away for two years. And I think I even brought it up to your office. I don't remember what, you know, I mean, the Secretary of State's office is supposed to get rid of those based on the deceased people, but obviously didn't. So anybody that wanted to be, you know, less than honest on something like that, they know the person's information already, they're relative. They could have just mailed that in, and, and it probably would have slipped through the cracks. Obviously, these people were not that way, so they, they wanted to bring that to attention. How do we know that the Secretary of State's actually doing their job when they obviously didn't in that case?
Well, the, so in that particular, if I remember right, I think that particular person, I could be wrong, passed away outside of Beltrami County or outside of the state, if I remember right. So if a person has health issues and they fly to Fargo or something and pass away there, then there's more steps to go through. We do get, or the, the Department of Health goes through all of their death records and sends those into the Secretary of State's office. And those then are queued up for whoever are Beltrami County voters are queued up for Beltrami County. I'm not sure how, you know, if... I'm not sure how, you know, if someone were to get a ballot like that or if they're concerned about their spouse still being on the registration rolls, they can bring a death certificate into my office and we can inactivate that voter registration then with that death certificate. I don't remember the particulars on how that, what happened in that exact situation.
My point is that the, Commissioner Carlson's point is that it's not that difficult to defraud if they have intent to defraud, you know, in a situation like that, if they were somebody that wanted to get another vote for their side, so to speak, pretty easy for them to do that and it very likely wouldn't get caught, especially not until well after the election, which it's too late at that point anyway.
It would be too late for the counting of the votes, but it wouldn't be too late for prosecution.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? We have, we have a lot of time to make up, right? You guys were really early. So we'll move on to security and process. We work with a company out of Omaha, Nebraska, and they're called Election System and Software, ESNS. And they, that's where we purchased our tabulation, our equipment, our assisted voting device, so anyone that's hard of hearing. And they also do our ballot designing and our programming of those jump drives. The, what you see pictured there is our bigger machine. We have two of these. These are called a DS four fifty. These are for tabulating large amounts of ballots. So we can put in an entire stack of mail ballots and it will go through and tabulate them very quickly. Where the DS two hundreds are the machines, they're the tabulators that are at a lot of the poll sites, is intended for the voter to just put their ballot into the DS two hundred. Once the design and programming is complete, we work with Taylor Corporation out of their, they are from the Mankato area. They do our ballot printing and they also do our mail ballot processing. So we upload to them all of our mail ballot registered voters and then they process that mailing for us.
That's Glenn Taylor, I believe.
It is, yes. That's, that's his, or he got his start. Yeah, that's where he got his start. Our process starts in May with candidate filing and entering of those races into the state system. So all of the local races, they file at the auditor's office. State and federal races are filed at the Secretary of State's office. We enter into the election reporting system, which is a state system, all of those open races. Then as candidates come in and file, we enter that candidate information onto or into the correct race on the state system. All of that information is posted on the Secretary of State's website as filing is happening. And then when, when everything is complete, we had the primary election that narrowed down our candidates to two candidates in each race. Then between August fifteenth and September thirteenth is when they went out and grabbed the races and the candidates from that state site and began our design and programming. And then coming up, we're in a period right now from September sixteenth through approximately October sixteenth where we test all of those ballots and all of that machine programming. So for ballot design and programming, ESNS goes out to the state's ERS site and pulls all that information and then they design our ballot for us. They create a sample ballot that we proof. And then once we give them the go-ahead on that sample ballot, then they start with programming the machines, the jump drives, and then send us an automated test deck. And that test deck is a pack of ballots for each precinct. So we have fifty-seven ballots for each precinct that hits every candidate on the ballot so that they know every candidate's race oval is being counted. Once we get the jump drives, once they've been programmed, we can put that jump drive into a machine, the DS two hundred, feed those ballots in. We get a test result with that automated test deck. We can print off, once those fifty-seven ballots go through, we can print off a report that says, here's what the results should be. We compare that to what the results say on the machine tape and make sure it is complete. And then we can go on to the next one. So we do that process for each of the precincts. So we have sixty-seven different ballot styles. Sixty-one precincts with six split school districts. So Port Hope Township, for example, a portion of it is in School District thirty-one and a portion is in School District thirty-two. So we have sixty-seven different packs of ballots that we feed through those machines. Once they're fed through, the results are recorded on that jump drive. We compare the printout, the results tapes that comes off that with our original document that says what the results should be. When that is equal, we take that jump drive. It goes into a standalone laptop computer. Those results are encrypted. And at that point, we take that jump drive out, put in a blank jump drive. Those encrypted results go down on that blank jump drive. At that point, that gets uploaded into the state's results software that then gets pushed out to their website. So when we go through that entire process for all sixty-seven of those packets, then we go back and say, this is what the website says our results should be. These are our printouts that we got with our test deck that say that what they should be. And we compare those, we prove those until we have one hundred percent accuracy. So that's what we're going through right now is that processing. The second round of testing is called a public accuracy test. We perform that right here in the boardroom. And I have Thursday, October eleventh at ten AM on there. It's actually Friday, October eleventh. That was a typo on my part. Public is invited to view this test and we do the same process. We run through the same process that we do with all of the precincts, every test deck with our extensive first round of testing. We choose a few precincts. We hit every race, every, every school district, every city ward, that sort of thing. So we make sure each, each race is hit once. So once all of that testing is complete, we are ready for Election Day. When we get absentee ballots, absentee voters come in, they fill out an envelope and we can start processing those, tabulating those results earlier than eight PM on Election Day. All of those results gets, get put on a jump drive. Direct balloting, which starts the eighteenth day before the election, which I believe is October twentieth. A person coming in to vote absentee upstairs can vote direct ballot where they don't have to fill out that envelope. They sign the authorization, the certification, just like they would in a poll site. They vote their ballot and they feed it directly into a DS two hundred that we have upstairs. So when Monday before the election comes at five PM, we close the office. We can pull the results off that jump drive. So now we have absentee ballots that came in with an envelope and we have the direct ballot absentees. Plus then on election night, Election Day at eight PM when the polls close, the election judges go through the same process that we go through. They close down the machines. They make sure the number of signatures that they have on the roster equal the number of signatures on the results tape or the number of voted ballots on the results tape equal the number of actual voted ballots. So once those all equal, they can close down their machines, bring that all into us. When they get into our office, we verify their day's activity. We make sure, yes, it does balance. Once that's done, then I have my third jump drive for that precinct. Say it's Bemidji Township. So I have Bemidji Township's election night jump drive, their absentee ballots with the envelopes and then their absentee ballots that were directly fed into the DS two hundred. These jump drives are, again, we sit in the back room. They're loaded into a standalone computer. The results are encrypted. They're copied then onto a clean jump drive and uploaded to the state. And this happens throughout the evening. The first thing that we get uploaded is the, the direct ballot results because at five o'clock on Monday, we have a jump drive that's ready to go. Those ballots have been accepted. Those ballots have been fed into the machine and we have the results. So at eight o'clock at night, that's the first jump drive that gets uploaded or all those direct ballot results. And then we go on to the absentees because we have teams here processing these, those absentees and closing that out. So as soon as they close out the absentees, then that gets uploaded. As the election judges come in, they meet with either Danielle or the City of Bemidji clerk to make sure that they, everything balances, then that jump drive gets uploaded. So throughout the evening, those results are going to change all throughout the evening as we're uploading those results. The state has also allowed us, for any ballots that come in after the three PM cutoff on Election Day until eight PM, allow us to process those separately. So for any of those, we could have a fourth, or a fourth jump drive uploaded to Bemidji Township's results. Any questions on, that kind of covers that process.
Greg? So Jody, the uploading of the jump drives, I don't know if it was a few years ago where we had the situation where the people uploading those chose overwrite instead of add to. Is that correct? And that now we've changed the process so that can't happen?
Correct. There is no override or add to option. If a jump drive has not been uploaded, it gets added to. If a jump drive, they, we try to put it in twice, it gives us, gives us an error that says that jump drive has already been uploaded.
Okay, so that, that situation can't happen again?
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, so if we're talking about election night results and things like that, and maybe I missed it, but every election, people ask me, you know, about the results that come to, you know, the county and oftentimes, you know, District Four Commissioners has always reported last. And that has to do with the distance from some polling places to upload these jump drives and things like that and not all precincts have the DS four fifty or two hundred, correct?
Correct.
So then that's, is that a different type of process on how?
Sure.
How that works?
Yep, I can go through it. So first I'll cover the first part of that. The precincts closest to where we are right now get here first. They get here the fastest. Some of them have ten-minute drive. I have a precinct up in Benville Township that, once they close the polls on Election Day at eight PM, they balance everything out. They have a two-hour drive to bring their ballots and their jump drives or their results down to us, their ballots down to us. They, they are a precinct without a DS two hundred. So they bring the ballots for tabulating here. We have, of our election night precincts, I'm going to say roughly half of them have DS two hundreds at the poll sites and the other half depends on the county to be their central count. We're called Central Count. They're a Central Count precinct. So how that works is they balance out, here's the number of signatures we have on the roster. Here's the number of ballots that we have. Once that balances, they pack everything up and come down here and meet with a team of election judges that then goes through the rest of the process with them. They help them fill out their summary statements of how many ballots they received, how many were used, how many were spoiled, how many, all of that information that's on that summary statement. That pack of ballots is then fed into that DS two, DS four fifty, the machine that I said we could put a stack of ballots on and it goes through very quickly. So those precincts then work with the election judge team to have their ballots counted at the, through the DS four fifty, results printed off. A lot of those election judges, precincts like to take results back and post at their town hall. So if they wish to do that, we print a results list for them that they can post at their town hall. But we have about half of our election night precincts use us for their tabulation. Of, of the sixty-one different precincts that we had, the different townships and cities, about half of that are mail ballot precinct where each registered voter gets a ballot in the mail before the election. The other half are election night precincts. And of the election night precincts, about half are, have their own machines and about half chose not to have their machines.
Thank you. I know I always get asked that question every, every election cycle. It's like, well, why does a, why do we have to stay up till one, two o'clock in the morning to see the results? So I'll let the folks know to watch this meeting to get a better explanation than I can give. Thank you.
And I would bet Panima is probably not, that's probably, that's probably our second for this away precinct. An hour, maybe more than an hour for her to get down here with her ballots?
So Jody, when you said, when you said that you tabulate the mail-ins or the absentees and the people that came in and voted, it's not absentee, but they voted early. You said you already had results of that. Does that mean that someone knows what the current count is?
No one knows what the, the results are, what the current count is. But we are allowed by statute to start tabulation after the close of business on the nineteenth day before the election. So when we stop envelope absentee voting, when we move over to direct balloting the next day, we are allowed to take those envelope absentee ballots and start that processing. So they get accepted or rejected. They then get ticked off against rosters and against supplemental reports. And then at that point, we can start opening them. Each of those ballots is inside a yellow secrecy ballot and then inside their envelope. So when we open all of the white envelopes with their signatures on them after they've been accepted, we take all of those sealed yellow envelopes and shuffle them. And that point, the judges start opening those sealed envelopes so they can't pinpoint, oh, the first one on the top was John Carlson. I'm going to see how he voted. So there's no way to do that. We shuffle those up. At that point, they are run through the DS four fifty and only the total of ballots is given back to the judge team. So they make sure, yep, we had seventy-six ballots and the machine counted seventy-six ballots. We see no results that's held on that jump drive until we close out that precinct.
So there's no way anyone would have a preliminary count? Okay.
No.
I had that question asked of me by a constituent. That's why I wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on to the final? The final piece of security and process is going to canvassing in our post-election review. So, all of the results that happen on Election Day, we then the next day start proofing those results right away. We proof what the state says we have against what the machines told us we should have. And if those match, we go on to the next precinct. If they don't match, that's the period of time where they are corrected. And after everything has been proved, then it goes to the results go to canvassing and that's what makes them official. So, any of the results that are out there on the state's website are not official until the county canvassing happens. The canvassing board is made up of two of you, two Beltrami County Commissioners, myself as the Auditor Treasurer, our District Court Administrator, a representative from the city of Bemidji, and a qualified voter. So, at the canvassing, and I believe all of you have been part of a canvassing, we go through that same process. We bring down all of the summary statements with the results attached to those summary statements. So, for Bemidji Township, we're going to have, here's their their results from election night voting. Here's the results from those envelope absentees. Here's their results from direct balloting. And here's the fourth result of if there are any that came in late in that 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM timeframe. So, we'll go through all of those summary statements, compare that to what what is on the canvassing report, ask any questions. The canvas board can ask any questions, get any clarification. And after all of that has been gone through, then the canvas board signs off on the results and certifies them as official. Those official results then get FedExed down to the Secretary of State's office. After that, and so canvassing will be November 14. After canvassing is complete, we also what we also do what's commonly called in out in the public, an audit of our results. It's called a post-election review. And what we do is we hard count or hand count every paper ballot for a precinct. And we get results for that precinct. We do it for two precincts to make sure the results that we hand count are exactly what the machines said, what the machines counted. If we draw those two precincts randomly, if they happen to be small precincts, there's a cutoff where we have to hit a certain number of the population. So, if they're small precincts, then we are required to draw another precinct. So, there could be three or four precincts that we have to hand count those paper ballots. Very similar with what we did with the city of Bemidji recount from the primary election. We brought all of the ballots down in those four different categories. We opened the bags of those those ballots. Those ballots had been sealed in ballot bags, still with the city of Bemidji judges' signatures on those over the seal. We opened those, sorted the ballots out by by the candidates and then recounted every one of those by hand. And that came to the exact result that the machine had on Election Night for for that city of Bemidji race. This is also a a process that's open to the public and public can come in and watch. I think in the years that I've been doing this, I've had one person, maybe twice. I think twice I've had someone come in and watch us go through the audit process. And the last person that did said she was very surprised because she was told you have to be quiet and sit and not say anything. And and she said, I asked my first question. And we're there to provide information to the public. So, if you if someone in the audience asks us a question, we're going to explain the process that we're going through. So, she was very pleased and and was excited about the process that she got to watch and got to ask her questions and understand it a little a little more. So, that is that is our election process in a nutshell. Any questions on that before I move on to new laws? Law changes. Legislature was extremely busy for elections the last two years in '23 and '24. I will we I will hit the highlights or some of the law changes that affect us or might be interesting to you. One of the and I do not have all of the statute numbers written on here. If you have a question on one of these, by all means, give me a call, shoot me an email, and I'll give you the statute information regarding whatever the law change happened to be. So, statute 211B 075 is voter intimidation. So, this statute allows for the protection of a voter. No bullying or harassment, no deceptive practices, no interference with registration or the voting process. So, this is this is basically the voters' rights as they go into the poll site. The very next point 076 offers that same type of protection to election officials again against bullying, harassment, any any deceptive practices in the poll site just gives that same type of protection to the poll workers. Along with that, for Election Day challengers, there was a little bit of a change in that law. Any major political party, so the DFL Party or the GOP Party in the state of Minnesota can allow authorize a challenger at a poll site or any nonpartisan candidate. So, at a particular poll site, there can be a challenger that was authorized by one of those two ways. In the past, that challenger could challenge a voter's ability or authority to register and vote at that particular precinct. They had to have personal knowledge that the voter did not live there or reason why they shouldn't be allowed to vote there. And then they would discuss that with the election judge and the voter. The law that that changed that a little bit is that now that piece has to be in writing. The challenger has to put that challenge in writing. And the challenger does not speak to the voter. The election judge then speaks the voter to clear that challenge. The state certified the Express Vote Assisted Voting Device. I love when there's election judges in the room that used to have to lug around. It was called an Automark. It was our old assisted voting device and it was about the size of this table right here. And they had to pull that back and forth to the polls. Our new assisted voting device is it's small, comes in a carrying bag that you can put over your shoulder. It's programmable. It's interactive. It uses a ballot card. You put the ballot card in. It either you can either read the selections that you have to choose from or you can put on headphones and hear those selections. And then it prints off your results on the ballot card. And that that is tabulated with a DS 200 or a DS 450. It it's tabulated right along with the paper ballots. This came in very handy. Our first election, we used this was the special election last November. And going into that special election, everyone advised us, we're going to see less than 20% turnout. We're not going to see more than 20% turnout for a special election. So, I believe we ordered ballots based on 40% turnout. And there are some precincts we got 48% precinct or turnout. So, these these express votes that were at those poll sites were then being being used for poll sites that were running out of ballots. They could use this express vote, vote the same same races that are are for that precinct. It prints it off and then that goes right through the machines. Decided to not work. The next the next change, the next new law was a notice to voter publication. In the past, we would have to publish a sample ballot. This sample ballot that we put in the newspaper combined every race onto one ballot, every city of Bemidji race with every northern township race with every school district. Bemidji Schools, Black Deck Schools, Cass Lake Schools, Red Lake, Kelly or Gremla. All of the schools were on the the same ballot. It was very confusing for voters. What the law now requires is there's a printout that goes into the newspaper that we publish about two weeks before the election that gives you a website where you can go to see your particular sample ballot. It talks about when absentee voting starts. It talks about in-person election night voting, when polls open for your particular precinct, talks about if you are in a mail ballot precinct and you didn't receive your ballot or you're not registered, your poll site is in the Auditor Treasurer's office and you can come in here and we'll take care of you. It takes up quite a bit of the newspaper, replaces that old sample ballot that used to get published in the newspaper. Felon voting restoration. In the past, a felon had to have completed their entire sentence, including probation, and have their voting rights restored by a judge before they were allowed to vote. The law change now says if they are no longer incarcerated but are still serving out their their felony, they are allowed to vote. So, for my election judges, if there's if there's someone who was who had a felony and they're standing in front of them, that's allowing them to vote. That means that they're out of jail and they're allowed to vote. Automatic voter registration. Go ahead.
Technically, somebody that committed fraud, felony for voting illegally, they could actually go vote again.
If they were no longer incarcerated. If they were no longer incarcerated, if they were not in jail. Yes.
Well, they can run for office too, so.
Automatic voter registration. We talked about that a little bit. That happens when you renew your driver's license. You automatically get registered to vote. We do have quite a few, not quite a few, but we have had people decline that voter registration. There are some religions that do not allow for political activity. And there are some people that just prefer not to be a part of that political activity. So, we have had people decline their automatic voter registration. When someone registers to vote, they can be put on a permanent absentee list. So, this is similar to someone who is in a mail ballot precinct. We automatically mail them a ballot when when absentee ballots are available and ready to go. Additional absentee voting hours. The the law passed or the legislature passed, our office needs to be open the two Saturdays prior to the election and the Sunday prior to the election. So, I believe it's October 26 and then November 2nd and 3rd, somewhere in there. The Saturday and Sunday right before the election and the Saturday right before that. The legislature also allowed for temporary tribal locations. So, if there's a tribal government within a county's borders, that government can ask the Auditor Treasurer to open up an absentee location for one day for absentee voting for tribal members and anyone in the in the county can go vote there. We have two tribal absentee locations set up. We have Red Lake tomorrow. Will be an election team and an IT team are going up tomorrow morning to set up absentee voting at the Red Lake COVID testing facility from 8:00 to 4:30 tomorrow. And the second absentee location is Wednesday, October 30. And that's for Leech Lake and that's at the Mission Community Center. Same process. The voters in the the Mission Community Center area are in large part in mail ballot precincts. There's most of that area is mail ballot precinct. So, we think we're going to be getting a lot of people that haven't registered yet or people coming and dropping off their ballots that they got in the mail. Other than that, the absentee voting and voting opened in our office on September 20. We're open Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 4:30 until the day before the election, until Monday. Then again, Saturday, the 26, 9:00 to 3:00, Saturday, November 2nd, 9:00 to 3:00, Sunday, November 3rd, 9:00 to 3:00. And then that direct ballot, so where you can vote absentee without going through the envelope, that direct ballot starts October 18. Before I move on to resources, any questions on direct balloting or absentee voting? Okay. So, on the county's website, you'll see you can find out if you're registered to vote. You can find out where to vote. You can find out what's on your ballot, see your sample ballot, get a registration application or request an absentee ballot. These are all links to the state's MN Votes site. So, it goes directly to a poll finder. So, if you want to find out where you go to vote, I think I put in this building into the house number and street name. And this is what you get. You you live in Ward 1. You vote at the American Indian Resource Center on BSU. You can click to see what the voting hours are. You can get a map to the poll site. You can see what districts you're in. And that's that is all I have for you. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Jody. Appreciate the info. I know there was an issue with the printing of ballots when it came to the judges and not listing incumbent on there. What's the status of that? Are we getting new ballots or what what's the update?
We have ballots that have incumbent printed on them and we're just waiting for the approval to use those ballots.
Okay. Any predictions on voter turnout this year?
We have been very busy. I think the first, so absentee voting opened September 20. And just for the fun of it, we took a little poll in the office of how many voters that we thought we would get. The highest person said 40. I said 18. And we had over 80. And it's been pretty steady ever since. We've had 100 people come in the next day and the next day. And it's so we're seeing a pretty heavy absentee turnout.
Yeah. Do you think we have enough ballots if there's a record turnout this year?
Yes, we have more that we've ordered more than 100% of registered voters. So, and if for some reason that doesn't pan out or we get 20% registration in an area, we do have the express vote that people can vote on without having that actual paper ballot in front of them. They can go through it on the computer and then it prints out for them.
Very good, thank you. I just wanted to mention that, you know, these non-resident aliens that get driver's licenses now, it does say right on the state ID, right on the driver's license, non-resident alien. So, if someone was trying to use that on Election Day, it says right on the ID that they're, you know, not a US citizen. So, they'd be wouldn't be able to use that. Just thank you again. Appreciate the info. I think you did a good job kind of debunking the myth that widespread voter fraud is a thing in this country. It's really not, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just want to say my experience when I did the primary vote was great. The people at the Boys and Girls Club were awesome and the new-fangled stuff, they every time it's a little bit newer. They, every time it's a little bit newer and a little bit speedier. And I just, it just, it just seems like things flow through very quickly now and I think that's awesome. So, and thanks to you and your staff. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate it as well.
Thanks, Billy.
Jim, did you have something?
Yes, um, I always have something. Uh, let's see here, a couple of things. People ask me, um, if they vote, will they be called for jury duty? Is, is that something that?
I have never been asked that question before.
Jim, I was told once that that's how they get their pool. Well, I, I was, but I don't know that that's true, but I would, that's what I was told.
I, I don't know the answer to that.
That's my understanding.
But whether you vote or not, I mean, it, it doesn't determine you, you get called, right? I mean, like.
I don't think they narrow it down by how many times you vote, just if you're in the system.
Yeah. And another thing is, uh, well, first, thank you for the presentation. I, I, it helps me, you know, uh, reminds me, you know, the, the work that you and your, your office go through every couple of years to, to put these on. Um, but I also want to mention that NACO is working to develop a report on how misinformation around elections and threats, harassments have increased costs on county election offices. Um, so NACO is working, you know, to develop, you know, some sort of toolkit to, to help, um, election judges, um, because I, I, it's my understanding that we are seeing less and less the election judges are returning because of the possibility of, of harassment and, and things like that. So I'm just kind of curious to know if, if your office is experiencing anything like that.
So I will say I've heard those same things as well. I've heard that everyone is short of election judges and get in touch with your county auditor's office and volunteer to be an election judge. In Beltrami County, we have more election judges than are needed. We have, everyone has stepped up. We have new election judges cycling in and older, more experienced ones cycling out and, and putting that knowledge on the new, um, younger election judges that come in. I have not heard of any, like, any kind of intimidation or anything like that out in our precincts. I know there was, you know, in twenty twenty when there was all of the, um, COVID protocols that we had to go through. It, it was a little more difficult, but everyone that I remember, um, talking to the judges felt like everyone was respectful and, um, so I've not heard those situations in Beltrami County.
Well, that's, that's good to hear.
Yeah.
And, oh, one final thing is, um, I, I was recently told, uh, by some, some voters that live in, in, on the Red Lake Reservation that they've received letters, uh, potentially, uh, perjury or, or, uh, what's it, misdemeanors? Uh, that they were voting in the wrong location. So I'm just kind of curious how, uh, a person that's living in Red Lake or on the reservation, um, was told that they have to vote, uh, in a precinct that it's not within the, the reservation. So I, I guess I told them to, to get in contact with, you know, with you because I, I tried to avoid, uh, having any type of, uh, communication, you know, with you during, during, you know, election times. So I, I just encourage them to, to contact you or your office, so. But I'm kind of curious to, to learn how that may have happened or, or is that something that might happen again? I don't know.
So on the Red Lake Reservation, there are four precincts. We have Panima, Red Bee, Red Lake and Little Rock. Um, also on the reservation, there is not, or at least from the last, within the last couple of months that I've spoke with Michelle Pakwin, there is not an official E nine-one-one road naming system that's authorized and accepted on the Red Lake Reservation. Um, after the twenty twenty election, I hired a, um, an intern, uh, again, a political science major out of BSU to work with, worked with Michelle, who put him in touch with, um, someone in the engineering department. I believe his name was Cade, to help clear up or make sure we get the most accurate information in the voter registration system that we can get. So our elections department, our G, Beltrami County GIS department and Red Lake Engineering Department worked, um, to get as, as close and as best we could. Um, what we've had to do is when someone registers, like, say you register in Red Bee and you don't, and your address is maybe what the Red Lake Housing Department has as an address and we're using what Red Lake Engineering had and it's not in the voter registration system. We're having to register those people with the house number of one and then the street name of Red Bee Precinct, Red Bee, Minnesota. So it's, it's a matter of, of, A, we need to have, or Red Lake needs to, when they adopt, when Red Lake adopts an official E nine-one-one naming system, then we can get that information, get it into the state's voter registration system and it will be seamless. So the, the people that may have voted outside of their precinct, um, a lot of, also a lot of those people have PO boxes in Red Lake. So they register with a Red Lake PO box that puts them in the one Red Lake precinct, but their street name is actually in the state system under Red Bee. And so then the state system thinks they should be voting in Red Bee because that's where they live. They think they should be voting in Red Lake because that's where their PO box is. So it's, there's a lot of, um, cleaning up or cleaning up that needs to be done. Um, but we can't start that process until there's, there's just one set of addresses.
So if a person lives in a Red Bee, but they're told they need a vote in Cormant Township, how, how is that, how, how does that get cleaned up?
So the address in Red Bee was, um, something, something, Highway one. And something, something, Highway one is two miles down the road in Cormant Township. And so that's how that particular one happened.
Okay. All right. So if they have any questions or concerns about, uh, a misdemeanor, I, I, I would.
They can call and talk to our office, um, anytime. I believe when the, when the system sends those letters out, I believe our phone number is in those letters.
Okay.
Um, I think there were eight of those letters after the primary, maybe. And so if any one of those eight people received a letter and are confused on which precinct that they should be voting in, they can give us a call and we can, um, get it figured out with them.
Okay.
Richard?
I think it was very good, uh, the way you presented, uh, took time to do it and people watching certainly got some good information. But I'm, I'm going to be really interested to find out the number of people that actually vote on Saturday and Sunday.
Okay.
Thank you.
We will keep track of that for you.
Craig?
Uh, Mr. Chair, thanks, uh, Commissioner Sumner. I believe that, that the phone company, Paul Bunyan, has nine-one-one addressing. So I don't know if you could work with the, the tribe to, to just officially adopt what is already available. Um, that would certainly make life a lot easier for, for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Appreciate your, thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Well, when, when Tom came to me and said, I said, I have a presentation. I really don't want to invent the, reinvent the wheel. It takes me about an hour, but I could probably go through it really quickly in forty minutes, but I didn't have to since you guys were so early.
Well, actually it took you an hour and seven minutes. That's okay.
There we go. I'm seven minutes.
Who's counting?
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Jody. Tom, do you have an administrator's update?
I do. Thank you, Commissioner. So just a few updates for you. Uh, just want to let you know, we continue to struggle with the Paul Bunyan Transit, uh, Board Meeting. That has been, uh, probably the toughest meeting to date I've had to schedule. We are going on about our thirtieth, um, attempt here, like for dates and times and such. Uh, so I, I think what we're going to do is we're going to have to, we're going to have to ask people for evenings and afternoons and then we're going to have to pare the group down to just the people that really need to be there. So we're going to pivot a little bit on this, but we're already pushing at least, um, you know, four to six weeks out on this. So want to let you know, it's not something we've forgotten about. Uh, unfortunately, it's just, we can't get everybody's schedules to align, so, uh, we'll continue to work on that. Uh, I reported last time, uh, in the last meeting that we were going to meet with the University of Minnesota Extension Office to talk about SNAP Ed. Uh, the concern, uh, initially came up during the Budget Committee meetings where, uh, we learned that SNAP Ed was, you know, um, run, well, with the extension was running SNAP Ed programs, which we kind of knew for, for a while, but also that we were running SNAP Ed programs and the question came up, well, what programs are each unit running? And is there duplication and, or are there synergies and such? So I convened a meeting with, uh, the two entities, um, Health and Human Services staff were there, myself and the, the Extension Office. And it is true that we're serving the same customers because in SNAP Ed, um, once you're eligible in the SNAP Ed program, um, and qualified, you, you can receive a number of different SNAP Ed services. And so the extension truly is providing a different set of services than the county is providing. We're doing more workforce impact. They're doing more supplemental nutrition, education, those sorts of things, uh, healthy education. So, uh, what we were able to do is, you know, confirm that there isn't a duplication of effort, but more importantly, uh, elevate the level of outreach and coordinate between the two entities uh, to provide, uh, more seamless and hopefully a better outcome, uh, in service levels. So, uh, so that's good. And, uh, and, and we've had a lot of turnover, uh, both at the extension recently and, uh, we've had some turnover inside the county. So it's nice to get names and faces back together and kind of rebuild that relationship, which I think is going to be positive. Uh, moving on to the class comp study, uh, we've been progressing steadily, uh, on that project. Uh, there's been several components that have advanced here, uh, over the last six weeks or so since the last update. Uh, we finalized the benchmarking of positions using the market survey, uh, which is really good. We finished the PAQ process, which is the position description analysis, um, uh, process as well. Uh, and then also the, the project team was evaluating, you know, whether to utilize the same pay plan structure that we have or to shift to a different pay plan structure, meaning number of steps, number of grades. Um, so that's in discussion currently. Uh, during this month of October, we, uh, we expect that, uh, department heads are going to review, uh, their different departments to ensure parity and internal equity within regard of the, uh, classifications uh, for the staff. And then also Baker Tilly's supposed to be finalizing grade assignments based on the position analysis questionnaire. They'll be developing a draft report as a result of that and develop financial analysis, which is really important to us to understand, you know, kind of what the implementation cost is going to be. Uh, we expect for all that work to be kind of completed in mid-November or so. So we still have a little ways to go. Uh, we expect also that, uh, we'll be updating the board, hopefully in early November, um, a bit more formally. And, um, but depending upon maybe some, um, decisions or direction of the board, uh, may go back and, and do, you know, rework a few things and then bring a final proposal to you, hopefully mid-December or, excuse me, mid-November. Um, if approved, uh, and then we would bring back the, the ultimate, you know, approval process through probably, uh, December, early December meeting. And then the staff internally would then start going through the implementation process. There's a lot that's going to have to, uh, churn depending upon what the outcome is here. It could be a whole new pay plan and we've got to program all of that into our systems and, uh, uh, and then get people in the right pay plan and the right step and all of those sorts of things. So there's going to be quite a bit of work once Baker Tilly's work is done for the county to then, you know, process those results and, and move forward. Ultimately, the goal still remains that we will be implementing, um, this, uh, this adjustment in January of next year. So just a few months away. Uh, of course timelines and stuff might shift a little bit.
Um, I, I'm reminded of your idea from last year about how we can kind of streamline payroll, HR, insurance. Is there an opportunity to do that with this or?
Software?
Yeah.
Uh, it's a.
Keep in mind if it's possible.
A great question. Uh, the answer is yes, if we had that system, if we had integrated, uh, you know, kind of FIS payroll, HRIS system, uh, this would be a lot easier for us. I mean, there's no question about that. We don't have that and the reality is we won't have it by the time we implement. But it is true that that could have been a huge benefit. Now, I know we've talked internally about this on and off, um, and, uh, you know, essentially with this year's election and all the stuff that's going on. I mean, we've got, you know, primaries and, and a major, uh, national election and stuff. It was decided that we kind of put off that conversation until next year where there was a little bit more room, capacity to sort of evaluate that. But I, I think internally, we're feeling the same way that it would be beneficial for the county to eventually migrate to a system that's more integrated so that when we have these types of, uh, adjustments, they're, they're, um, less prone to error because we have a couple of systems now that we're entering information in and a lot quicker, uh, more productive for us to then implement and upload the, the, uh, the data. So that is something to come. It's on our list of things to do. Unfortunately, we won't have it for the implementation of this, but it's a great question, Commissioner Gold. Uh, just wanted to let you know, if you haven't already gotten your emails, uh, for those of you who do receive benefits uh, from the county, open enrollment has started and it will go through, um, October thirty-first, uh, at four P, or four thirty PM. So close the business on October thirty-first. So if you receive benefits, uh, unfortunately, the system is such that you, e, even if you're not changing any of your benefits, you, you still have to go through the open enrollment process and click on all the things that you have had and, and, uh, selections and then, and then, you know, make sure that it registers and then, and then you're done. So if you need any help with any of that, you know, let our office know, uh, we can hook you up with a, uh, one of our HR technicians and, and assist you on that. Uh, then lastly, was just going to remind you that, uh, for important dates on October fifteenth, that'll be a busy day for us. That's our next board meeting, uh, but it'll start at two o'clock. Uh, at least that's what we anticipate with the, uh, Community Health Board Meeting. That will run probably from two to three o'clock. And the regular session, uh, from three to five and then there, or excuse me, the work session from three to five, the regular meeting at five o'clock and then at six o'clock is a special meeting. It is not a board meeting, uh, so we're not advertising it necessarily as a board meeting. It's a community meeting on, uh, the opioid settlement funds. Uh, these are our required meetings that we have to do once a year. I think there's three or four of these that we, uh, that we end up doing. Uh, this one will be held in this room right after our board meeting. So we, we want to try to, uh, adjust the agenda for our regular session on the, on next Tuesday or the, the next meeting to allow for us to, to break at six o'clock and then, uh, and then move into the other meeting. Uh, it's not something that you're required to attend, but you are definitely invited and encouraged to attend. We'd love to see you there. Um, just want to let you know that that's, uh, at the next board meeting, October fifteenth. So that's all I have for you. Let's stand for any questions you might have.
Mr. Chair, are there any, um, any items that want to be pulled from the consent agenda? That, um, that will be the time if anybody wants to do that? No? No other changes, so the agenda will stand for our regular board meeting. That's, uh, that's it. Thank you.